All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board. Today is Monday, May 18th. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We are... Ms. Shaki, can you please take the role?
Yes, I will, President Grant. Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Reverend Matthias?
Here.
Ms. Shaki here. Ms. Williams is not here yet. Ms. Lewis is not here yet. And President Grant?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So may.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Wonderful. So the first thing on our agenda this evening is to acknowledge our resolution for COVID-19 board meeting rules and public participation in electronic meetings. For reference, this is a resolution that was set into place to allow our board to meet virtually and to be able to take action virtually while we are under the stay-at-home order from the governor. I am also going to ask Dr. Gorman to start off this evening by giving us an update on things that have been happening with the district and how we are handling distance learning.
Would you like me to go ahead, Ms. Grant, right now?
Yes, please.
Wonderful. Okay, President Grant, members of the board, and incoming Superintendent Lidrian Roby, thank you for joining us tonight, Dr. Roby. Just a quick update of what's been happening the last couple of weeks or so. We are continuing with meal distribution for our families, both Mondays and Thursdays, from 11:30 until 12:30. As of last week, we distributed 150,000 meals to our families. So that's a tremendous amount of meals. We are at City, Sibley, Ottawa Hills, and San Juan Diego. That is a Wyoming location on the southwest side. We will have no meal distribution on Monday, the 25th. That's the holiday. But we will ensure that we double up some of those meals so that our families can get the resources that they need. So even though we will be taking Monday off from meal distribution, which is the 25th, we are still going to ensure that our families have what they need. We had 13 days of technology distribution, and we're noticing right now approximately 80% of students are logging in. The numbers are much higher in high schools, and I'm not sure if that's because of the credit component, where students need, you know, credits to graduate, and we have some very motivated students at this time. We also distributed 2,000 print materials to families. So what we did is we connected with all the building principals to determine who, which of their students were not logging in, and then we sent print materials to those students. So one of the connections that we had with the seniors to motivate them, Mr. Ross referenced this a little bit earlier when he and I had a conversation about how sad some of the seniors were that they missed out on Senior Field Day. So what we did from a Senior Field Day perspective is we gave the trophy this year to the school that had the highest participation rates as it relates to distance learning. So this year, Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori had the highest participation rates as it relates to distance learning. Rodney Lewis, John Helmolt, and I went over there last week with Javi and awarded the trophy of Senior Field, of Senior Field Day to Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori. So that trophy will stay at Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori.
They tend to win most years anyway, right?
So the, they've logged, they did not win the first two years because they were not in existence those first two years. Creston won those first two years. I hear they had a pretty good principal over there those first two years.
Oh, yeah.
And Union High School won in another year. But other than that, Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori has won every single year. So a big shout out to Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori. Last day of school is...
Dr. Gorman?
Yes, Ms. Lewis?
All right, okay, success.
All right.
I've been crying for 40 minutes, but, all right, I'm in. Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Tell Craig goodbye. Don't be laughing, Tony.
Go ahead and mute yourself. I didn't mean it to sound like that, but hit your mute button.
Okay, here we go. I know you're always saying mute, mute. I'm all right now? Good.
Okay, so the, just a quick, a few updates. Last day of school is June 3. Of course, that's two weeks from Wednesday. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday next week, that'll be our last week of school. Seniors have until May 29. For those seniors who still have work to complete, they will have until May 29 to complete all of their assignments and receive those credits. Of course, most seniors were finished on May 8. But for those folks who have a little bit of work to do, they will be finished on May 29. We've determined right now that summer school, and we were holding out as long as possible, summer school will be up and running. It will be virtual summer school. We're still hopeful that there may be some type of hybrid component, but as we get closer to summer school, it looks like we'll be moving in the direction of a virtual summer school right now. Return to Learn, Return to Learn Council, Advisory Council, this is something that the governor announced last week. She wanted representation from urban schools, rural schools, and suburban school districts. The Grand Rapids Public Schools is serving, or I'm serving, on that Advisory Council. I made the team aware that we're going through a transition in the superintendent seat, and Dr. Michael Rice was happy with my being on there. And then if the council extends past July 1, Dr. Roby will take that seat. So we will have representation on the Return to Learn Advisory Council. So that's pretty exciting. We have graduation ceremonies, so thank you so much for those of you who have already participated in the virtual tapings for the graduations. I believe every single person here is going to contribute and say some remarks, so thank you so much for stepping up and doing that. I have the dates now for the release of the virtual graduation videos. On June 3, we are going to graduate CA Frost and Innovation Central. That's Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori. So that's 5:30 and 7 o'clock on Wednesday, June 3. On Thursday, June 4, we are going to graduate City and Ottawa Hills. City goes at 5:30. Ottawa goes at 7:00. And then on Friday, June 5, we are going to go with U-Prep at 5:30, and then Union at 7 o'clock. Let me see if there are any more updates.
Those will be broadcast by the YouTube GRPS Live?
Yeah, so we will use social media, YouTube, website, everything we can. We really wanted to give each class its own moment and not mass-release them. So we're, they'll be, we'll be able, families will be able to access them at all times, but they're all going to be released at different times, just so we can honor those schools with their own times. Again, getting as close to a normal ceremony as possible, and we are so hopeful that at the end of the summer or in the fall, we'll be able to recognize our students in person. A couple of comments or questions that I received from board members this week, one of which was around social-emotional learning. So Reverend Matthias, I sent you something today. What are we doing to support SEL? So we have elementary SEL blocks twice per week. We've created Google Classrooms for our youth advocates, our behavior specialists, and our family support to support their students, the students with whom they were working. We have three therapists on staff who initially were working with small groups of students, but now they're working with all students in the district. We have our long-term suspended students. We are creating a pathway for those students to get re-enrolled in our online programming at this time, so they don't get farther behind and providing supports for them. And then we have 13 schools that are being provided support from KSSN. So that's, those are a few ways that we're supporting social-emotional learning. There were some additional questions as it relates to what is the expectation for Grand Rapids Public Schools' teachers during this distance learning period? Of course, the assignments need to be posted Monday morning so that students are ready to learn, and teachers have been doing a wonderful job with that. There's five hours of synchronous learning that is mandated, where the teachers have office hours or have a kind of a Google Meets meeting or picking up the phone and checking in with families. So that is happening. A board member asked about a financial update, because we're hearing a lot right now about, you know, what's the future financially in the school district and, I guess, statewide. Larry Oberst is going to present on that a little bit later, and if you have follow-up questions after that, please feel free to ask. Ms. Grant, that was a rather lengthy update. I hope I hit everything, but I'm just so proud of our students and our staff for stepping up during this time, and I think things are going relatively well considering the circumstances.
No, thank you. That was a wonderful update. We appreciate it. Next, we have one action item for this evening, and that is the executive exempt contracts renewal. To give a little bit of background, these are the contract renewals for the cabinet-level members. We want, the one difference that you'll see this year with the contracts versus other years, previously, we've seen two-year contracts. This year, the contracts are for one year, and that is with the intent to provide some stability for cabinet-level and for Dr. Roby as she comes in and joins the team, but also to give her an opportunity, sorry, to give her an opportunity to meet the team and make her own decisions moving forward as a superintendent. So what you have before you are one-year contract renewals. And, Dr. Gorman, is there anything else that I should say on that piece?
No, I, everything that you shared is spot. You know, I've had some conversations with Dr. Roby. Of course, we want that stability, especially during a time of crisis. We've got so much going on in the school district, and we really want Dr. Roby to hit the ground running. That said, you know, after a year, we all know that Dr. Roby's going to want to have a tremendous amount of input as it relates to her team that reports directly to her every single day. So I think that the one year gives the district stability, but also sets it up nicely for Dr. Roby when she takes over.
Yes, thank you. So do I have any discussion on this action item before we take a vote?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on the contracts renewal with the exclusion of the Executive Director of Special Education and vote separately on that office position.
Okay. Kathy, was that a second?
You're muted.
I have to follow Renard's directions.
But that was a second, Kathy?
That was the second, yes, I know.
Kathy, are you ready to take that? Wonderful. I have to remember that you were here now. You're ready? All right, please take the...
Dr. Flores?
He's not here.
He's not present?
Oh, I heard him.
Not today.
Not today? All right. And Ms. Lewis says yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Not here.
Is not here.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we need a motion?
We do.
Okay. Someone like...
A motion to approve the contract for special, Executive Director of Special Education.
Do I have a second?
No, John is seconding. I want to know, though, the last one, what is this about? It's just that this is going to be a separate contract? The special ed one is a separate contract than the others that we just voted on? Is that it?
Yes, the most, the previous motion was to vote on the contract renewals with the exception of the Executive Director of Special Education. We need a new motion.
We have a new motion. I need a second for the motion.
I second that. Nope.
Okay, that was John who moved, the first, the one on special ed. Mr. Ross? Okay, Mr. Ross. All right, take roll.
Wait, wait. We have discussion.
Okay.
So...
I want to move this right along here, Tony.
So, yeah, I just, we have had reports of mismanagement of the Office of Special Education for at least five years in the, and this has continued since the previous, since the last contract, the Director of Special Education, so whenever that was two years ago. So these allegations have been pretty persistent, and unlike other allegations, they have not been followed up on by the administration to refute or show resolution to the allegations, so they've been ongoing. We have been, these allegations have come from numerous families, parents, staff of the district, in numerous methods. And to be frank, the community, I think, has expected us to do something about special education, and we haven't really made any specific actions, at least in regards to the management. So for those reasons, I plan to vote no on the, on this contract.
Thank you. So I have comment or discussion points from, just get some clarity on what a yes or a no vote means then if we're voting on a non-contract renewal? Yes. Meaning that position's not terminated, it just means there's not a contract guaranteeing one year of employment, correct? Correct. Dr. Gorman, do you want to chime in on the clarification?
Actually, I would like to ask Sharon Pitts to please provide clarification on what a no vote would mean, so that I'm not saying anything that is incorrect. Craig, if we could invite Sharon at this time, that would be helpful. You're on mute, Sharon. There you go. Thank you.
Are you able to hear me now?
You can. Thank you, Sharon.
Good evening, board members. As you know, because we did not non-renew any of the cabinet-level staff, the educators have a automatic renewal of their employment for the following year. However, the board via this contract has put forth some special additional benefits for the executive staff. And as a result of that, a no vote would mean that those benefits would, additional benefits would not be extended. For example, the annuity, things of that nature.
I don't think I understand that. Are we, are we voting now? I thought we were voting to eliminate offering a contract to special ed.
Well, you are, you are, because the contract, you're really voting to provide the special terms and conditions under that contract for the, for the executive staff, as opposed to just a general rollover of employment, which basically would mean that that employee will receive the same level of base compensation that they would have. Because in order to non-renew anyone who has a license, remember, there's due process under the statute, we have to have provided 90 days of written notice, et cetera. And that would be for anything that would be, any decision that would not be arbitrary or capricious. In this instance, the superintendent has not recommended a non-renewal of the employee because I believe he does not, believe that he has a basis for a decision that would not be arbitrary or capricious. Does that help or no?
So I guess just to try to clarify for us all, a non-renewal in this case would simply mean that the benefits associated with the contractors on the table would not be extended. However, due to the fact that there was not the 90-day written notice, this sort of automatic rollover would still be in place for employment this year, but that benefit piece associated would be the piece that's in question. And then moving forward, obviously, if there was some action taken regarding anyone for that matter, it'd be important to meet that 90-day notice prior to the next contract, if that were the case.
Yes, that is.
Ms. Grant, may I chime in at this time?
Please.
Thank you. So there, this, in this particular school year, under, under my leadership, there were no major concerns that were brought to my attention around special education. Some of the metrics, as it relates to special education, improved, specifically graduation rates for students with disabilities. Of course, this was a fragmented year. You know, mid-March, we were focusing on all efforts related to COVID. I know it's well-documented, a couple of years ago, that there were some concerns. I believe everyone was on the board or close to the board at this time, but there was no reason for me this year to non-renew that this particular employee in this particular school year. So I am, I am providing that information to you based on my approximate 10 and 1/2 months in the seat.
I have one other clarifying question, Ms. Pitts, if you could. In regards to the matter of something being arbitrary or capricious, when we are looking at contract renewals, does that same standard apply? I mean, is it not within our purview, simply not to extend a new contract without that same level of, I guess, that same standard?
No, only for purely exempt employees. So, for example, for me, you could, I'm a purely at-will employee, so you could decide at any time to terminate me unless it was for an unlawful reason, for example, a discriminatory reason, age, sex-based, you know, race, et cetera. But instruct academic people who are licensed by the state of Michigan are not purely at-will employees. They have certain due process rights and requirements.
Okay, I see. I just thought all the cabinet-level folks were considered at-will employees, but there's...
They are not, no, they are, they don't have tenure. They cannot obtain tenure in those positions, but all of them are not purely at-will employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or discussion?
Christian?
Yes.
Okay. Tony's reason that he gave earlier for not voting for this...
Yes.
...contract. Could you explain that again, Tony? I don't understand. Why would you vote against this?
We have been receiving various forms of methods of communicating dissatisfaction with the management of special ed.
Okay, I get that part, but I don't understand what, by turning this motion down...
So for those reasons, so for those reasons, I am voting no to renew this contract for these benefits. So basically, we have heard, I mean, we're a school board. We hear complaints across the board. On nearly every complaint, I can remember, those, within a few days of receiving the complaint, there's usually a communication letting us know how the complaint was resolved or what the extenuating circumstances might have been. For the management of special ed across the district, there has been no communication that, that either the circumstance was not accurate or the circuit, or the, or a resolution bided. So as far as I know, these allegations are left still standing.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Baker. I'm going to jump in and say, let's go ahead and take a vote on this. We have a motion, we have a second. There are no new items or questions for discussion. Ms. Lewis, can you please take the vote?
Yes. Dr. Flores is absent. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? She's absent. Dr. Baker? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes. Thank you. The next item that we have on our agenda is a presentation on equity and inclusion. So we have Myda Gunno with us and Malika Brown. I will, Dr. Gorman, if you want to give more of an introduction on this presentation?
Yes, absolutely. So Ms. Grant and I connected, we've been connecting, of course, on the topic of equity, you know, quite frequently. Ms. Grant and some board members, as well as some other cabinet members, attended a national conference where the focus was equity, and Ms. Grant and I, in preparation for today, wanted to share with you what we are doing as it relates to equity from a district's perspective, really showing you where we are and where we need to go. And so today, Dr. Myda Gunno and Ms. Malika Brown will be here to give a presentation on the work that's being done. We will open up, I'm sorry, at the very end of the presentation, there will be a few minutes to ask questions, and we will do our very best to answer those questions. So with no further ado, Dr. Myda Gunno.
Good afternoon, Dr. Gorman, incoming Superintendent Dr. Roby, President Grant, and distinguished board members. I would like to ask Mrs. Malika Brown, Director of Equity and Inclusion, to come forward. Mrs. Brown will be providing an update of the work done thus far.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Gorman, incoming Superintendent Dr. Roby. I'm not sure if you guys can see me. Let me try again. Here I am. I am, and board members, thank you for this opportunity and for allowing us to present with you an overview of what I consider the bones of the work that we are doing in the Office of Equity and Inclusion, and then hopefully to engage in a short but meaningful conversation that will continue as we move through the year. And so I have prepared a little presentation as talking points for you, and then we'll open it up for questions at the end. So I'm going to share my screen with you now, and then we can have some conversation about our work as a district in service to our most valuable assets, which are students.
It is perhaps surprising, then, to learn the traditional greeting that passed between Maasai warriors and how are the children? It is still the traditional greeting among the Maasai, acknowledging the high value that the Maasai always place on their children's well-being. Even warriors with no children of their own would always give the traditional answer, "All the children are well," meaning, of course, that peace and safety prevail, that the priorities of protecting the young are in place, that Maasai society has not forgotten its reason for being, its proper functions and responsibilities. "All the children are well" means that life is good. It means that the daily struggles for existence do not preclude proper caring for their young. I wonder how it might affect our consciousness of our own children's welfare if in our culture we took to greeting each other with this daily question, "And how are the children?" "And how are the children?" I wonder if we heard that question and passed it along to each other a dozen times a day, if it would begin to make a difference in the reality of how the children are thought of or cared about in our own country. I wonder if every adult among us, parent and non-parent alike, felt an equal weight for the daily care and protection of all children in our communities, in our towns, in our states, and in our country. And I wonder if we could truly say without hesitation, "The children are well." Yes, all the children are well.
That was a bit premature. My apologies. Okay. Some time ago, I was able to listen to a speaker from the business world called, his name was Simon Senekin. He introduced the concept of this golden circle, and it talked about starting with the why. And work can't be done unless we start with the why. So, thinking about what our motivation is for the work that we do, so I decided to kind of follow that storyline through this presentation. So, once we know what our motivation is for the work that we're doing for and in service of students, then we can get there. Oftentimes, honestly, a lot of organizations and people get this a little bit backwards. They can, they start talking about the end product or what it is that we want to happen before we consider why it is that it's important that those things happen. And so, in the video that I played at the introduction of this presentation, establishes for me, our department, in our department, the why. It establishes a question, and "How are the children?" And "Are all the children well?" And so, as I continue with that and thinking about that and answering that question, we find that there's a lot of research that proves by any objective measures that both inside schools and outside schools, there are some disparities. And that happens on a national level, and similarly in GRPS, we find that not all the children are well. Our "all" is not yet "all." And for our Department of Equity and Inclusion, that would be our why, because not all of our children are achieving at a level that we would want them to, and they're not all achieving to the, to the level that we would want. That "all" is also referenced in our district's mission and vision. So, as we think about how we get there, and so the next part in the golden circle talks about the how. So, now that we know that our why is to make sure that our "all" is all, that all students are achieving, that all students have everything they need, we have to figure out how to get to where we want to get. So, I'm going to walk you kind of through a little bit of the history of where our department has been, and then right up until now into our future how, and then we'll get to the what after that. So, this office was established in Fall 2015 as a part-time position, I believe. It became a full-time position in January 2016, just while I took, when I took on this position. And at that time, we established some priorities for our work. The first one that I set about doing was researching some trends in this area of DEI. So, I needed to know what and how other organizations were bringing about a change, what strategies were they using, where could I start thinking about it? And then I went on an information gathering campaign within our schools and to figure out what our condition was, and we're still investigating that today. So, I began to study current practices and strategies in GRPS, and I came up with these three questions. How are these terms, diversity, equity, and inclusion, defined? How do they unfold in the education setting? What impact do these themes have on students, on family, on staff, our community, and really society as a whole? And then a very important question in this work, whom are we serving? What's our current condition? Until we know who it is that we are serving in our current condition, then we can backtrack and answer those other questions. At that point, I kind of started dipping my toe in, what might a strategic plan look like? How might we begin to rough this out? That led to a development of a mission and vision for our department. We identified four focus areas to support that implementation. So, curriculum and resources, our workforce, professional learning, and family and community engagement. Those things really hold our mission and vision. So, we can get armed around curriculum and resources, for example, thinking about what curriculum we're offering to students. Does it reflect who they are? Are resources equitably distributed throughout the district? Are we thinking about what is in that curriculum and how that curriculum is taught? And then the next is our work, our workforce. So, in working with human resources, as far as recruiting and retaining a diverse staff, is going to be very important. And so, I've been working with human resources and Nick Schwartz to really think about what that is, how our hiring practices may influence that. And so, there's some projects that I'm working on with human resources. And then professional learning. There's a lot of learning that needs to go on in our system. And so, thinking about this from a top-down and bottom-up approach, and so thinking that those are the top, we have to be able to know what it means for us to really have an equitable educational system. And that professional learning bubble is so important, because beginning with the inside-out, we want to be able to offer experience for staff, for students, for parents to begin to think about equity, think about diversity, thinking about being inclusive. And, and under that umbrella is really thinking about what cultural competence is, how it looks in the curriculum, what it means to be biased in the process of anti-biasing. And then last, work with family and community engagement to make sure that our parents are just as astute and understanding as we hope to be, and in bringing them into the fold and allowing them to be part of this process and making sure that they're, they feel like they're welcomed and their voice is welcomed here. So, that brings me to the how of our core work and kind of what we've been doing so far. So, we went about gauging the system. Where are we? Where do we need to go? Thinking about professional learning and some of the, I'll share a little bit later some of the things that we've implemented and where we want to move with that. And then really, we had just began to think about systems integration. How do we get this integrated into the system so that it doesn't hover on top? That it's not something extra, that it's braided into the very fiber of who we are as a district, what's done in schools and departments? And so, for that, we want to establish some leadership teams, teams in departments and at the building level, so that these tenants could be talked about, learned about together at the building level, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And so, the one to three-years goal, goals became helping staff understand who we serve and making sure that they are at least exposed to the beginning of best practices and tools to best serve our students, to begin to gather and advocate, sorry, gather and train advocates for change. And you'll see that when we talk about our equity leadership teams, to understand, recognize, and respond to biases first within ourselves and then others, and then think about it within the curriculum. And that involves us being able to have some very difficult conversations. And then study and begin the integration of best instructional practice, or practices for diverse learners. So, in year one, our opportunities to learn included our cultural landscapes. I believe that was the fall or late summer 2016. I had a chance to be in a board work session where we read an article and we talked about who we served and why we have to approach our work with students and families differently than we approached that work 40, 50, 60 years ago. And then I gave an overview, similar to the one that I talked about earlier, of our department and the work of our department. That kind of launched us into a book called "We Can't Teach What We Don't Know" by Gary Howard. He happened to be the author of an article that I use in our cultural landscapes, and I still use that book in intro trainings today. I feel it is very important from that aspect for us to begin to thinking about who we are, who we're teaching, and do they line up, and how we have to be able to change some things that we're doing. At the same time, and in that year too, I started thinking about what might a rationale look like if we were to launch into a policy for equity and inclusion for the different, for, for the district? And so, 2017, I had, since then, I've been working on a draft policy and rationale. And I'll talk about that a little bit later and show you where you can see it and really kind of put some things together for the policy for, for the Office of Equity Inclusion or equity inclusion in general in our district and where we need to go. And then the summer 2018, I kind of tested a course. And it was a 12-hour course held first week in June over three different days. And I just put it out there to see what kind of participation I would get. It gave me a chance to write a course, plan a course, and I planned on having slots for 15 so that I can kind of grow this and see where it went. I ended up with 27 people who were faithfully there, each one to three days, did the homework, exercises at night, and, and a waiting list of 11. And so, that told me that there are people in the system who are ready to jump into this work. And so, after that, I knew that I was ready to form some type of equity leadership team to help us engage in this work. And so, now I want to describe for you what that equity leadership team looks like in this building. It's still growing, and we are still learning together. And every year, I ask, we ask ourselves, who's not at this table? Who needs to be here? And so, we began to add people from our district. And so, we started with seven members in the fall of 2018. As of winter 2020, before we left into our school year, face-to-face early, we had 14 members. The initial seven all came from that summer course that I talked about, and they were invited members. They included department administrators, school administrators. Now, we have a couple of teachers and some support staff. It was important to me to have a variety of people in that group for two reasons. The first is varying perspectives, and the second is that everything that we learn in our learning time and the opportunities that we have to learn together, I knew that they would be going back and working with their departments, and they can begin to weave some of that learning in working with the departments that they work with. So, for example, I have Emmanuel Armstrong, who works with counselors, and he can begin to weave some of the things that we talk about into his professional learning sessions with his counselors. We have been participating in MDE's African-American Student Initiative. So, the seven of us have all been through Phase One, and we're in the middle of Phase Two this year. Those members who came in new to the team this year, started in Phase One or were invited to start in Phase One, and really just learning with other people from across the state. And that gave us another view, not only to learn, but also to learn what was going on across the state and kind of pick people's brains. And we've had some excellent speakers, and we're doing book studies with them also. As a group, we are working on three books that we are studying together, "Cultural Proficiency" by Lindsay and Terrell, "Culturally Proficient Leadership," which forces us to take an inside look at who we are culturally and how that shows up in the places that we navigate, and then "Courageous Conversations About Race." I also established an LGBTQ+ Advisory Committee. We have seven members, so we are seven members strong. We've all been through the silent crisis, which is creating safe schools for LGBTQ students is the name of their training. And then three of us attended the trainer, the training of trainer and leaders. So, now we are now certified to give that training. And just before we left in March, we were gearing up to do trainings in partnership with the ISD and offer some in our schools. And so, we've just rolled that over to next school year. So, I promised I would kind of let you into some of the professional learnings that we have been offering. We introduced an equity series. It includes equity, what I call Equity 101, 102, and 103. Begins with the cultural, the cultural landscapes, goes to unconscious bias, and then that last one begins the introduction of cultural responsive teaching. And we base that off of the work of Zaretta Hammond. Creating Safe Schools for LGBTQ Youth. We will launch that in the fall also. We are able and have been invited into PLC planning and PDs in conjunction with other departments and other schools via their administrators. So, we've done PD with human resources. I've done PD with various special education department with the secretaries and parents also. So, I've also been a part of the PAL meetings and done some piece with them. There are various book studies that have been going on. We introduced some online options this year. And then we've done some cultural competence, PD and programming for staff specific to our diverse student population. So, one example is we have a pretty large African refugee population. And so, we partner with someone from the community to offer professional learning for staff on those different cultures. We had programming this year where we brought in a family-style dinner and informational session just to allow staff to begin to experience that African culture so that they can develop an appreciation for it and perhaps an understanding of their students. And I also include here, PD that we have come in that we'll be doing with the Native American Education Program. And then the last thing we introduced and we launched this spring was something that we call #RealTalkGR. That came, the impetus for that was the importance of having conversations about race. I don't think that, that we have enough conversations that we have to begin to start the conversations, and we start somewhere. So, these are 45-minute talks that are followed up by questions that are online. People, teachers or staff can answer those questions or have those conversations. In each series, we have a guest. Continuing with programming, just a little bit of you into the other part of what we do, which is really highlighting and making sure that our students are involved. This would have been our third, our third year, perhaps our fourth year, hosting grade school to grad school for girls, similar to the African-American Medal Achievement Conference, except for ours is all GRPS girls, and that is really a space where young ladies in the district can come and learn together and really be kind of filled up and built up. We are involved in assisting with the planning of the Ottawa Hills HBCU tour to make sure that opportunity is there for our students. And then we serve as a liaison for various camps from university and different contests. We have made ourselves available this year with our training with Culture Responsive Community, sorry, with conversations about race to be part of a sort of circles in schools that involve teachers and students or just all students. Consultation with classes on project, which has been my favorite. So, I've been able to Skype with classes as they were working on African-American History Month projects that they were assigned. And then each month, we send out information on Heritage Month celebrations with the caveat that we're not going to just celebrate this particular heritage on this month, but here's the information we highlighted, and we hope that you'll bring this out, that you'll continue this for the entire year. So, the future, as we kind of come to the end of the presentation here, we were getting into planning the GRPS Equity Abide, so that's Acceptance, Belonging, Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity, which would really engage our equity teams in the work. So, this would, we would be establishing the school and department equity leadership teams from here and really help those schools to form those teams and the conversations and the professional learning that they have through their PLCs and other opportunities. They will work under the guidance of those people in the district equity leadership teams. So, what you're seeing now is kind of a flow chart of how we hope things will go. So, September, October, there, there will be two months of a focus. So, we decided that the topic one would be diversity, so we're really focusing on topics of diversity. So, a part one would be launched in September, and this would be at the school and department level by the people in that school and department. We understand, I understand that all of our departments and schools kind of take on a culture of its own. And then, so I want us to be able to guide the people, the principal and their leadership staff into holding and hosting those conversations and learning within that building so they can make it work for them. Then we would have a help session in between those two. They would come back for a part two of diversity. And then in November, we would meet as a district equity leadership team. That's all of the equity leaders from the departments and buildings, along with the district-level equity leadership team to report and began to planning. Begin planning for our next one, which is the equity. We have to talk about yet as a team and with Dr. Gorman and Dr. Roby, how this might be morphed, given that we didn't have the spring to begin. To prepare for the launch in September. But this is kind of where we hope to go with beginning to infuse these concepts at the school level and into conversations that we have. Further in the future, we are going to bring on board student equity leadership teams. I had the privilege to begin to work with the district student council this year to begin to kind of test some things out with our students. And how our students might come around and we could support them as they support us also through this process. It was a joy to work with them. And so building on that work, we'll be launching some student equity leadership teams who will work in conjunction with their building equity leadership teams. And the last thing, which is certainly not the last thing, but the last thing for this presentation. Is thinking about digging into the system a little deeper and learning more. And so then introducing equity audits at the district and school level into the district. And this is something we had just begun to talk about in March. These audits would include everyone from students all the way out into the community. And really bouncing on these couple of questions and looking at everything that we do, not just in the audits, but every decision we make, everything we do. I would like for our system to ask these questions. Does the action, the policy, the rule, et cetera, disrupt an equity? And if it's not disrupting inequity, we need to make sure, we need to know that it is perpetuating inequity and then act. So that we can find ways to disrupt it. So those will be the lenses that I hope that as a district that we can take into thinking about everything that we do from that equity lens. So all those things are kind of how we hope to get to where we need to be to make sure that all of the children are well. I mean, our all means all. So that leads me to the golden circles, what? And it's our equity and inclusion. Our desire product, what do we want to end our mission? And it kind of comes from our district's mission to ensure that all GRPS students are educated, productive and self-directed members of society. By ensuring access to an equitable education experience that celebrates and capitalizes on the diversity of our students, staff and community. And that's that be in that abide for belonging. So making sure that our students now are assured in their diversity and that diversity is welcome here as a part of making what we have better. So as I, as I close this, I need to go back and make one quick thing. At the beginning of what we talked about, as far as what our why is, I refer to diverse students and diverse learning. And I kind of forgot to click on this slide then, but I really want to make sure that we understand that diversity is not just race. It's not just skin color. There are many things that differentiate us. And so in this whole that we're talking about, we're talking about race, culture, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientations, socioeconomic status, ability, age. Religious beliefs, moral and political conviction, that's the name of a few. And so those things we need to make sure that we get there. And so as I close this, I believe you received a link. I was trying to figure out how I could get you information rather than polling everything here or send them in an arbitrary email. So I created a little site called it'seiresources.grps.org. And that's a place where I'll continue to put things, so the books that we're reading, I'll put them up. But you have access to the presentation today. The one that I mentioned, our cultural landscapes, because every year I update our demographic data there. I have a resources tab that I'm going to populate with books, populate with. Learning things. And then the one thing that I have put on so far is this 21 day. Equity Challenge and it's by Debbie Urban. So if you've ever heard the book, about the book Waking Up White, this is mentioned on her website. And those 21 days, I think is really filled with things that you can read, listen to, learn, that will really get our, our wheels turning as far as equity and inclusion and where we need to go. And so with that, I'll kind of stop sharing my screen and open it up to questions and allow Dr. Gonal to add in anything that she needs to.
Any questions?
Thank you, Malika. That presentation was really thorough and I know we've been waiting on it for a while. So many different things have happened. So thank you for joining us to share that information.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I look forward to the work we're going to do.
Dr. Grant and Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Yes. I'm wondering if I may ask a question of Ms. Brown, please. Okay. Ms. Brown, I'm wondering, I don't remember what board meeting we did this, but we hired a firm to help us with equity and inclusion and so on. And we were going to hire this firm that was going to go out and do things in our school and report back to us. Where are we with that? Is that still happening or because of the COVID?
Mrs. Brown, I believe she's referring to the equity audits that you were mentioning.
May I answer that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So I believe that's been put on hold due to the COVID-19. And I believe we'll be hearing more information in the future, but for now that's on hold.
Absolutely.
Malika, just first of all, I just want, I mean, it's, it's because I've been still here since you started this work, whenever that was, you know? It seems like it was a couple of months ago, but then I'm sure it was more like years. But you know, so I'm really impressed with the, the structure that you've developed over time and the knowledge and everything. I, I really like, so I have a comment and a question, but first of all, I really like the way you focused on. I mean, I like the phrase, all staff understands who we serve and teach. And I think that that's, it's easy to just read that and it makes sense. But I think it's, it takes a lot of work to actually understand who we teach and serve. And, and in terms of bias, conscious and unconscious, we know that. People come to community with biases, whether they want to acknowledge them or even recognize themselves. And I think that there's two ways that the most common way that we address that is by communicating that that bias exists. And get people to kind of examine their own biases. But we have to fill that with, with alternative information. So that way it's not just recognizing bias. And I think that, and to be fair to those who end up coming here as a professor, as a former professor at Ferris. The, there's not a lot of curriculum that prepares students to come. So I, I know this because my intro to sociology class or my race and ethnicity class might have been the primary way. That students were prepared to go to Grand Rapids University Studies. And there's no way that a semester course that covers the history of ethnicity and race in America is going to do that. And I know that that's, it doesn't even matter if it was really good or if it was a whole major. Once you get to a neighborhood and there's nothing about African American history, if you're an expert at it. And how do you manage teaching at Bullock? That's a whole different scenario than whatever it is you think that you care for. So I'm really impressed with the effort to get to build knowledge of the communities that people are in. It's absolutely important. And with that, I think that it's really, I think a great tool that you suggested is that is these diversity and equity groups at the E school. So those persons can find neighborhood resources to teach the staff about that community rather than someone coming from outside. So with that, is that something that you're expecting to happen at all of our buildings?
It is eventually. I am cautious enough to know that if I roll this out in 52 buildings right away, I would lose my mind very quickly. And so as we talked about this when we met in February with the, with the entire BI team, which included the equity leadership team. Principal Ryan Hubbard and my LGBTQ plus advisory team. We, we said, maybe we can start with 11 or 12 schools and spread those out across the district and on, on each, you know, the north, the south. West side of the district so that we can really test out and perfect a method for rolling this out and gather some information. But eventually I would, I, my desire is to have an equity team that functions in each building and then roll those up to each department. Our schools don't just run on who's in the building. You know, we have departments that whether they think so or not, touch, touches student lives and family lives. And, and so, and so I'm hoping, I don't know how it's yet, how it's going to be formulated. But somehow to make sure that there is some type of group that functions in, in our major departments. Food services, transportation, budget office, human resources.
Yeah, thanks. Great work.
Thank you.
I have, I guess, a question and a comment. First question that, you know, I caught at the early part of the presentation, you mentioned working with human resources. But I guess I'm curious on what we might be doing at the onboarding stage for new teachers and other building staff. Obviously to really indicate, you know, this core value for us as a district. Obviously, we want to kind of set the foundation of that as people are, you know, coming into the district. So I guess my question is, just want to hear a little bit more about where we are right now with that onboarding work.
Yeah. And so the biggest part that I have with onboarding right now is through professional learning and the new teacher. Gosh, new teacher orientation, right? And so Tina Watson is a part of my equity team and has been since the beginning. And so during their, their onboarding, the, the days that they spent in PD before. I have audience with them and so we go through a modified version of that cultural landscape. So I do a little bit of the cultural landscapes with an introduction to equity there just to bring awareness. And then invite them to keep in contact with me. So I get emails from the teachers or I keep in contact with Tina. Tina has a lot of knowledge now. She's studying this stuff. She's in, she's putting it into her presentations for new teachers. So that's just the first step. And so we're hoping to grow that and make that bigger without inundating new teachers with coming out of the classroom every night. But really making ourselves available through a first contact, knowing that we exist. I get do book giveaways to start some reading and then that further that contact with Tina Watson, how she works with the new teaching staff.
I guess Dr. Gorman, Dr. Roby, I would also, I guess, recommend that we also include this, if it isn't already in the onboarding for non-classroom employees. Obviously, I mean, we're in this all together and that includes everyone that comes in contact with our, with our young people for sure.
Yeah. I have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have had social workers, school psychs in those new teacher ones also. So I mean, it would just be a matter of opening it up to the group or we can have, we can talk about it and have a separate one too.
Including our front office folks and, you know, folks who are the faces of our buildings or whatnot.
Absolutely.
And one other thing, I guess, maybe to just to maybe put in your toolbox to consider. I had the, really the pleasure and I think some, some real personal growth came out of participating in something that's called intergroup dialogues. It's largely higher ed piece. You know, I know University of Michigan is sort of in the state considered the, I don't want to say champions, but for lack of a better phrase, champion of this work. At GRCC, we do have some trained staff to lead these intergroup dialogue conversations as well. They are a bit time consuming, about a day and a half with a dedicated core group and you can kind of rotate teams out of it. But the reason I mentioned to you though, is that again, personally speaking, I think it really forced me to self-evaluate my own biases. And I think, you know, and, and, and those biases obviously are, you know, for everyone, they can be in any particular area, be it race, ethnicity, gender. You know, whatever the case may be. And, and in my cohort, there were about 40 of us and literally to the individual. Everyone came out on the other side genuinely saying that they feel like a changed person. You know, I'll, I guess I'll even put a little plug afterwards. My wife even complimented me on my better listening skills. You know, and I, I think really that, you know, it really just helps move the needle in a way that is experiential. You know, and really kind of hits the heart as well as the head. So again, you know, it is a bit time consuming, but I'd offer you to explore that a little bit. And if you want to be in contact with some of our folks at CC who are, who are trained and facilitate those conversations. I'm sure as a partner in this work, we would be interested for sure.
Mr. Ross, what is the name of it?
They're called intergroup dialogues. Yeah. Now, whether that's the trademark name or not, I guess I have to investigate. But, but that's the way it was presented to us under that title called intergroup dialogue. And I can definitely, you know, talk with you offline more about it and connect you with some folks. And the last, the last thing was the definition for inclusion. I don't know, I, I think it felt a little. What's the word I'm looking for? Deficit oriented, I guess, to be honest with you. You know, so I guess I just offered to maybe examine that a little bit more. I think I definitely get, you know, where, where we are as far as, you know, what we want to do with, with the way that definition is laid out. But again, it just seemed a little deficit sort of oriented mindset, at least at my first read. So I just kind of put that out there for the thought.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Would you mind setting that back up so we can see? I was just looking at it too.
So it's here, those marginalized identities generally belong?
Yeah, I guess I said, I don't, I don't think it's bad per se. But again, it just gives me a slight feel of paternalism, I guess.
Gotcha. I'll review it. Thank you. We don't want anything that looks deficit mindset-ish, certainly.
And so I did want to just give after, after that presentation, you know, we have been talking about the steps that we plan to take as a board to support the district in their work. And it includes several different things, of course, implementing policy. I think, I think that is one of the major end goals in all of our learnings to implement policy so that it lives on well beyond us. But even before we can get to that point, really identifying what are the pain points for our students, for our families, where we really need to. Provide solutions and, and give attention to certain areas. And we've been having this conversation for a long time, but especially during this time, COVID-19. We see that a lot of inequities are being exacerbated and children are dealing with the effects of those inequities in their home. Which they always have been, but you know, it's really something that has come to the forefront at this time. So although this is a conversation that has been long going, I think there is another layer of urgency to it at this point and at this time. And so I wanted to make sure that we started with the presentation for where we are. While we also understand that things are dressed, some things are drastically changing. There are a lot of changes that are happening, the students that come into our doors. No matter what that looks like next year, they may be completely different individuals from the ones that walked out of our doors the last time that they were there. And so how are we defining what equity looks like? In actual, in action, in our students' lives? What is, what is equity while they're sitting at home right now? Is equity that they have access to all technology? Is equity that all of our students have access to higher learning? You know, these are all things that we're working on, but like, I really want us to be able to work together to paint a picture of what equity looks like. What are the tools that we can give our students for equity? And then continue on this process. This is of course, isn't a one-time conversation and it's always such an honor to work with you all because we're on the same page about that. This isn't a one-time conversation. I wanted to set up this intro conversation, but understand that there is more work to be done. Things that we need to define and really drill down to what those pain points are for our students. And we'll, we'll share an email later referencing those presentations that Dr. Gorman spoke of from, that we were able to see in DC. from, uh, that we were able to see in DC and in Miami. Uh, one of the presentations talked about the Equity Continuum. And where does your district stand on the continuum? Because there are different, do you just understand? Do you just acknowledge or is it really the lens that everything is done through? And I think that as a district, we have done a lot of work there. You know, we're not at the, at step one, um, but there is more work to be done. And on top of that, uh, there's another presentation that will share the link with you. That really just talks about defining equity and what the next steps look like. So we will get something else on the calendar, but wanted to really engage in this conversation with you all.
Yeah, I did, I did want to comment, this is a, you know, from what I'm seeing, it's a, it's a five-year introduction that we've had to diversity. I want to make sure that we're holistic. You know, we come from a, a historical perspective. When you look at the history of Grand Rapids and you look at the racism, we, we need to talk about that. Certainly it's been documented, so it's, it's not like you have to reinvent it. But from that, we have the catapult to, uh, what's been moving us historically. And certainly, you know, diversity has changed from just a, a race issue, black and white, to gender and so, and so forth, even religion. So I want to make sure that, that we document that. You know, that Grand Rapids Public School at one point would not allow an African-American into central or into such and such school. Not to beat ourselves up, but to simply say, look at, look at the needle and where it's moved. And even in our classrooms, if we have a history class, that we can actually point that out. And we're looking at ourselves and they're continually, conceptually in the present, if it's 2020, 2021, look at themselves and say, wow. Those kinds of things, as well as we're onboarding staff and, and, and all those kinds of things that we do to help our teachers become equipped, whether they, they know it or not, or intentional or not. So I want us to document and look at that and see that. And there's, again, there's been enough written on that, that we don't have to reinvent it, but we can certainly dialogue about it. Uh, and as our policies come out of certainly all those, all those dialogues, so.
Yeah, and I would just say that, um, my hope with our work moving forward is that, you know, we've, we've done some wonderful work with, um, finding out who we're serving and some wonderful trainings. And we can look at other trainings, but those things end up being just pushed to the back burner or becoming one-day trainings that maybe are referenced once in a while. And I really am hopeful that the work that we've put into this and the policies that we create become living, breathing things that we reference in everything we do, um, as a board and, you know, as educators and administrators. That's the hope is that it just becomes the way that we are, the way that we work is through that lens, so.
I, um, just to add to that, and this follows on some of the stuff, um, that was just said, but, um, you know, one of the things I, I like, I would have to say that if, uh, the, those on the academic achievement committee, when we reviewed, um, the purchase of the new, uh, reading curriculum was far more advanced, um, with cultural diversity and bilingual supports. And so there's such a great, I, I mean, considering where we were. And I, I, I do think that, um, that we need a curriculum that teaches and respects the identity of the students. And the other thing, and again, I go back to this, um, that the resources, let's go back to Reynard's point about deficit. The, the resources in those buildings, the students, their parents, the neighbors, the church leaders are so immense. And, uh, I mean, we have students from all over the world and we're teaching geography. And it's just that if we're not getting a chance to learn from those, those in the room, those in their building, then. And I, first of all, I want to applaud not just your work, but you know, the fact that we're considering a reading curriculum that has to incorporate that. But also just to encourage that we need to go further down this road of making sure that not just that the readings or the learning reflects the students, but that, you know, it really gets them to dig deep into their own identity in each other's.
Absolutely. Are there any other comments or, uh, Mrs. Brown, Dr. Gunno, uh, do you have any other, um, comments concerning your presentation?
No, I just want to thank you for letting us present. And I look, we look forward to working together and better at what we do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Gorman, next, it looks like we have a report on the financial update.
Uh, yes, Ms. Grant, and I would also like to thank, uh, Dr. Gunno and, uh, Ms. Brown, uh, for that very thorough presentation. It, it is the, the work that we need to be doing. So, uh, Ms. Grant, thank you for allowing that to happen today. All right, next up, uh, you, you've all been hearing probably a tremendous amount as it relates to, um, it's state aid, finances, things of that nature. Larry Oberst today is going to be presenting on, uh, what he knows right now as it relates to student funding for next year. Uh, and also this year, because this year is not finished yet, so he has some, some information to provide on that. He's also going to be referencing our fund balance, of course, and the, the many challenges that we could very well be facing moving into the next school year, uh, as a result of the, the, the crisis that we are currently going through. So Craig, could you, uh, get Larry O. into the conversation, please?
Bingo. Everybody hear me? Good. All right. Uh, thank you, Dr. Gorman, and, uh, good evening, President Grant, board members. Dr. Gorman, Dr. Roby, good to see all of you. As Dr. Gorman said, I will attempt to give you an overview of the financial situation as we know it today. And much like everything related to COVID-19 of the last, uh, I think we're in our 10th week now. Uh, things change sometimes on a daily basis, hourly basis. And there's still a lot of questions that are unanswered. But, uh, let me, let me get going on this, these comments and certainly if you have any questions, uh, ask them at any time. As I think I've mentioned in, in prior meetings, certainly in the finance committee, although we've been at finance committee meeting in a few months here. Twice a year, the state has what's called their, uh, consensus revenue estimating conference, CREC for short. It's usually in January and then, uh, also in May, and the May one was on Friday. And historically, the May CREC conference is used as the basis for, um, completing the subsequent year's budget. So normal circumstances, a CREC that took place on Friday, that information in terms of revenue projections could be used, um, to complete the 2021 year state budget. Both the general fund portion of it and the school aid fund. Because of the impact of COVID-19, all the shutdowns and, and the reduction in tax revenue, the consensus conference came to the determination, and, and I, part of your materials that you've got, your board meeting, I included the executive summary. And, and let me just summarize a little bit of what that says in terms that you can understand, hopefully. There is a projected 1.1 billion, that's what it'd be, billion-dollar shortfall in school aid revenue for the current fiscal year, the 1920 year, 1.1 billion dollars. Uh, keep in mind, again, the state's fiscal year ends in September, our fiscal year ends on June 30th. Absent any action by the legislature, I'll get in a little bit, just a minute of the detail surrounding that. That would require a statutorily defined proration process. And effectively the impact on us, us being K through 12 districts is about a $700 per student decrease in current year funding. And the CREC, uh, also projects the next two fiscal years, so 2021 and 2122, based on their best estimates at this point, that $700 per student decrease would continue on through next year. And at least partly into the 2122 year. So right now, our foundation allowance is $8,111 per student. Some $100 per student increase would be $7,411. And just to clarify my previous comment, that $7,411 would continue into the 2021 year and likely the 2122 year, but we'll see how things change. So what does that mean? Well, we are 45 days from the end of our fiscal year. Plus, the governor's executive order requires us to continue to pay our employees the remainder of the year. So even though the shortfall is in the current year of 1.1 billion, we can't do anything about it in terms of making spending adjustments. One, because there's no time and two, because the governor says we can't do that. So, uh, the challenge we have is, we have been working on, first of all, amendment two to the current year budget. And that amendment two now, uh, is going to have to reflect this reduction. And if you take a look at, I also included in your materials, a, a fund balance summary over the last, well, since 2016. And just to summarize what that summary shows, we ended last year with a fund balance of 12.2 million. And through amendment one, we're projecting a current year, year-end fund balance of about 8.3 million. That $700 per student cut equates to somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million reduction in revenue. Uh, that would essentially hit the current, the 1920 year without the ability to adjust that. Now, the state did apply and received $390 million in ESSER funding, which is part of the Federal Cares Act. And that $390 million translates on an individual district basis, about $8 million to us. The application, we have to apply for those dollars. That $8 million also needs to be shared with all non-public schools, the Christian schools, the Catholic schools that are in our, um, district. Uh, there is a different way of computing that. There's still some questions about what that allocation. We think at this point that allocation may approximate for us a portion of that $8 million, maybe five and a half million. But we're still not sure about that. And, um, again, there's an application process that five and a half million dollars can pretty much be spent on anything. And clearly we have some additional costs associated with COVID-19 and distant learning. Uh, it, it sense it could be used to fill some of the $10 million budget hole I just, I just mentioned. But in spite, if, if, despite that, there's still a, a big hole to fill. The process at the state level, just to, is, is that the state, or the treasury notifies a state budget director, this is all statutorily defined, that there is going to be a deficit of revenue. The state, or the state budget director then notifies the legislature in writing of the deficit. As of today, that notification has not yet taken place. Again, this just came out as of Friday, the, the CREC. And the state legislature has 30 days to do something on their own. What does that mean? Well, the $1.1 billion deficit in the school aid fund, they could essentially develop what I'm going to call a negative supplemental. So they could actually allocate that shortfall differently than an equal amount across the board. That's, that's their prerogative if they can agree on it and get it through the legislature. Uh, if they don't do that within 30 days, then there's a statutorily defined proration methodology that essentially says each district has to have an equal amount of reduction. That's where the $700 per student approximately comes from, uh, if it goes to proration. So we don't know where this all end up. What is clear is over the next two and a half to three years, there will be a reduction in state aid to the district. And so as a result, both with finalized amendment two, and again, there, there's still not, there still hasn't been, and there may never be a, a extension of the June 30th deadline for you folks, the Board of Education, to pass, uh, the June, I'm sorry, the 2021 school budget. Uh, so we've been working on amendment two, which we'll have to make more adjustments to, we've been primarily looking at the expense side of amendment two. Because obviously there has been some changes in expenditures over the last, by virtue of the last, uh, nine and a half weeks of shutdown. We have somewhat better idea of what the revenue will look like, but we likely, we hopefully will have a better idea of the next couple of weeks in terms of what the legislature is going to do with this 1.1, 1.1 billion dollar reduction. The ESSER funding, as I mentioned, we have to apply for it. Uh, the application process just opened up on Friday. Uh, but we still need information from our non-public schools to do the calculation of the allocation. And they also have to, non-public schools have to provide us, once they know what their allocation is, what they want to spend it on. And that will go into the application. So this funding, like title money, does not go directly to the non-public schools. It goes to us on their behalf. And then we have to monitor and ensure that they spend it according to the budget that they provided us as to how they're going to spend it. The one good thing about the ESSER funding, the nine, almost eight million dollars I mentioned, is that, um, there is no prohibition in terms of supplement versus supplanting, which most federal dollars, um, you can't use a supplant current operation. So that's why I mentioned earlier, potentially we could use some of those dollars to plug this $10 million shortfall. We also obviously don't know what's going to happen in the fall in terms of school opening, what that may look like. How we know it's probably will look differently. So even though we may have some more information over the next couple of weeks or so, it's likely the budget that we bring to you for approval by June 30th will change dramatically between your approval and what ultimately happens in the end here is additional information becomes available, all this stuff. But what we're doing is currently with, in terms of next year's budget, we are looking at all aspects of the district operations and trying to see how we can make adjustments to absorb, um, absorb this, these cuts. I, I will alert the board, and again, I, I don't know those, know this with certainty yet. Because what I've just mentioned, the fact that we may have $10 million in, in cuts for the current year, and we have no ability to make spending adjustments. Amendment two, the general fund may come to you with a less than 5% fund balance. Understand, we have a board, current board policy that states that a minimum fund balance is 5%. So if that comes in below 5%, and I'll leave it to, um, Ms. Pitts, our legal counsel. Right now, you could not approve a, a budget that has a fund balance less than 5% without a change in the board policy. We'll certainly communicate to Ms. Grant, the rest of the board, when we have a better idea where, where things are going to come out, whether or not that, that may be an issue. And if it isn't an issue in, in, uh, the current year, 1920 year, via amendment two. And if it isn't an issue in, in the current year, 1920 year via amendment two, it still may be an issue for the 2021 budget year. Okay? Just very difficult. I also sent to you a summary of all the districts in the RISD, what their fund balance was at the end, as of the end of the 2019 year. The percentages you see on that, on that schedule is a little bit, is different calculation than the early warning, different calculation than the, than the board policy. I was on a Zoom meeting this morning regarding these manners, matters. We had a representative from treasury on that, asked a question about the early warning situation, the fact that this will likely, these cuts will likely put a number of districts into that. And the treasury assured us that they, they're, they take a look over the, over a three-year moving timeframe. So one bad year, if you will, for circumstances beyond our control, even though we may be below a 5% fund balance, does not automatically throw us into the early warning legislation and additional regulations that come along with that. So I think, in terms of that perspective, I would say that I'm not terribly concerned about that. We just need to, to see what we can do to, to absorb as many of these cuts as we can and maintain as much of a fund balance as we can. Because again, this is just, this is not a one-year or a one and a half-year issue we go back to normal. No, it's, it's, it's minimally a three, a three-year in terms of these reductions. And clearly, when things look better from a financial perspective, they're not going to make up the $700, $700 per student cut in one year. We had the cuts in 2009, 2010, and those totaled $450 a student. It took, I believe, about seven years before we got back to where we started in 2009 fiscal year, before those cuts took effect. So this is, this is more than that, and it'll likely take at least that long to get back to where we're at. So it's, it's going to be challenging the next number of years, and, and we'll see what we can do to soften the cuts certainly into the classrooms. Let me stop there and ask if anybody has any questions. You want to add?
I just, Larry, thank you so much again for another comprehensive presentation. And speaking with Ms. Grant and also Dr. Roby, we thought it was very important that we share with you what is happening right now and some of the ramifications could be moving forward. Larry provided for you some fund balances of neighboring districts. We are, we are all in this together across the state. We're all dealing with similar challenges. There's some, a tremendous amount of advocacy going on. Both teachers are coming together and advocating to ensure that we get the funds we need to be successful. Many of the superintendents groups are coming together. Our lobbyists are working with us to ensure that we have the funds we need. But we have to, we really wanted today to, to give you a snapshot of where we are and what we're hearing, so that there's no surprise moving forward. And what we will do is, we will take a portion of every time where we get in front of you to continue to update you on, on where we are as it relates to our financial status. So we want to make sure that you're all in the loop and that there are no surprises. That's all I have.
One piece of information, like, let me just share this with you, too. There is a, the state has a, about a $1.2 billion rainy day fund, we call it. And that was statutorily established. And there is also statutory, statutory rules around how much of that can be used. So it's actually part of the, the CREC executive summary that you have on the last page there. So this year, without further legislative action, they could use about $287 million of that 1.2 billion. And again, that 1.2 billion is, is statewide, so it's, it's to be used for both the general fund and the school aid fund, not just the school aid fund. So 287, without further legislative action, in other words, they'd have to change the law to be able to take out more than $287 million of the current, current fiscal, the 1920 fiscal year.
I may have missed this, though. Since next month, the next time we meet is June, and will we be voting on a budget? And how, what's the process that allows us to consider that? Or is that waived? That was waived?
So, so Dr. Baker, of course, I'll have to have a conversation with Ms. Grant to determine when she would like to have a work session to discuss this further. It is, of course, our intent to, to get a budget before you, but we will need to, I will need to get with Ms. Grant to determine when that date will be, and we want to do it when we have as much information as possible. So Ms. Grant, with your permission, we can connect and, of course, consult with Larry O. and, and Dr. Roby and, and get a budget for you pre-July 1.
Do have a question, Mr. Obers. If you could educate me, educate us a little bit, where I'm going is, I know the, the amount that we get from a state is pretty static across districts regardless of, you know, the district. But I know when you talk about school funding, there's some intricacy per district that, that figures into the per people dollars somehow. I forget exactly what that is. But overall, what I'm getting at, though, is I'm wondering, from a legislative perspective, if we have opportunity to sort of lobby for using that variance from districts, from one district to a next, to lobby for, I guess frankly, for districts like ours to not necessarily take a, an equal hit in comparison to districts who may have some other local dollars that add to their per people funding.
As I mentioned, once the legislature is notified of the shortfall, they have 30 days to craft additional legislation where they can surgically adjust things the way they see fit. So as an example, maybe to answer your question, good illustration, yes, they could say, legislature say, as an example, that for districts that currently have more than a 10% fund balance, we're going to take $1,000 per student out of their state aid. For those that have less than 10%, we're going to take $200 out. That's what the math turns out to be, I don't know. That is, the legislature can do that within that 30-year timeframe. The proration, though, is statutorily defined and has to be equal for all districts. So if it goes to a proration calculation, they can't do that. Only a legislature can do it in the 30 days they have after notification. That answer your question?
Yes, yeah.
The legislature is the only body that can change how that shortfall is allocated amongst the districts other than equally.
So yeah, I guess really, my, my question for you was, in particular, trying to see, am I accurate in my memory in that there's some, again, I get that what comes from the state is static across our districts. But again, when you look at per people funding for us compared to, you know, whatever other district, I know that the, from a budgetary perspective, they may have a greater per people identified amount that they spend, not necessarily the state allocation, but just the per people amount that they have budgeted.
No, you're, I mean, you're right there. I mean, there's, there's essentially the minimum, per people allowance, which is what we get in many, most of the districts in the state get that. But there are districts that were held harmless when proposal A was passed, that had per student allocation from the state, 811. In our, in our ISD, Godwin Heights, East Grand Rapids, Forest Hills, I think Caledonia, like four, five districts. So they, they do. But again, I mean, the legislature is the only body.
Yeah. So I guess that, that takes me, and this is maybe more of a conversation with Himhold and our lobbyists, but I'm wondering if there's opportunity for us to use that previous held harmless arrangements to advocate for, again, some different proration of sorts, you know, at the state level, is what my, is what I'm just putting out there for food for thought.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can. I don't, well, I'm out the politics.
Yeah. And not that I'm optimistic, not that I'm optimistic that it would go anywhere with our, you know, our current state legislature, but again, I don't necessarily know if there's any harm to, to advocate for such either, though.
I will mention that there are certain code sections of the School Aid Act that are exempt from cuts, and they're primarily in the, in the special ed area. The at-risk dollars, the 31A dollars are not exempt from, from cuts. Other questions?
Well, I was just wondering, this is Kathy Lewis. I was just wondering about, this is federal money that we're getting, and it's going to be distributed to charter and religious schools in our district as well?
It's E S S E R, yeah. It's federal money from the Federal Cares Act, and much like title money, all students, no matter what school they go to nationally, are entitled to federal dollars. So we, as a public, as a public school, it comes to us, and then we distribute it and monitor the spending by non-public schools of those federal dollars. Same thing we do with title, with title programs now, we do the same thing. So money does not go directly to them, it comes to us. And we just, and we, in many cases, we arrange for the services, and we pay for the services directly that are provided to the, to the non-public schools. And in the situation, the E S S E R funds, if there's some of these school districts need to buy more technology, we actually will order the technology, what they need, it's delivered to us, and then we deliver it to the, the schools.
Larry, on the, on the rainy day fund, from the city, if I'm not mistaken, how are you able to, or how are we able to bid for that money or?
The rainy day, the state rainy day fund money?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, we don't have any control over that. That's, that's, again, the legislature, the governor determines whether or not that. I, I'd like to think that's pretty obvious that they would use the 287 to cover the budget hole. But how it gets distributed between the school aid fund and the general fund, I don't know. Keep in mind also, I didn't mention this, but the school aid fund, you may recall, not only does it fund K through 12 education over the last 10 years, it's also funded community college and higher ed. So all three of those entities would be subject to proportionate cuts. About 87% of the expenditures on a school aid fund are in K through 12, as you can well imagine. So most of that reduction is going to hit us, but the community colleges and higher ed will also see a reduction in their funding from the school aid fund, and likely from the general fund, too.
Well, Mr. Obers, thank you for all of the wonderful news that you brought us. We appreciate it. If there are no further questions around finance, as we know, this will also be an ongoing topic that we will have to keep an eye on and understanding that things change quite frequently. So thank you all for, for always, you know, paying attention to the details, and we'll make sure that this, along with the other general update for the district, is a part of each of our meetings.
One other quick thing before we get off of that. Dr. Gorman, do you mind, I guess forwarding, Mike, if you think there's any potential merit to it, what I said, maybe legislatively to Mr. Himhold and Rusty and the group? And again, I just think it's at least worth exploring, not necessarily optimistic, but close miles don't get far, so.
Yeah, John has tuned in right now, Dr. Ross. So he's, he's viewing this just like everyone else. So I will, and he's, and he said via text, I got it. So we're, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Okay. Next, we have public comment. And we do have one individual for a public comment this evening. To give a quick reminder, public comment is three minutes. We are unable to respond, but we do listen to each comment and will provide feedback and response if it is needed. So Craig, we have Dr. Gorman to Wendy Winston. All right. We are ready when you are, Wendy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Board and Dr. Gorman. And I would also like to welcome Dr. Roby. My name is Wendy Winston, and I'm a high school math teacher at Grand Rapids University Preparatory Academy. I'm also very involved in the Grand Rapids Education Association. My comments tonight are personal, not from the union, though. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the discussion on the management of special education for GRPS. I also want to thank Dr. Gorman for all of the regular updates that he's been giving at board meetings and his video updates. I wanted to share an update with the board. GRPS staff and students are working really hard, and we are embracing the challenge of remote learning. Organic professional learning communities have popped up. Our educators are collaborating and supporting each other. We are sharing resources, hints, successes, and bloopers and flops. GRPS staff, parents, and students are trying new things and connecting in new, new ways. I really never thought that I would be working tech support, but I am. Moving forward, please continue to give us regular updates and communicate as much as possible about what to expect for the end of the school year, summer school, and for the fall. Most of my colleagues normally spend a large portion of their summer lesson planning, designing units, and learning new skills and strategies. And I know that they will appreciate as much information as possible about what to expect in the fall. I also hope that the district collaborates with families, staff, students, and the Grand Rapids Education Association when making plans for the fall. My students have been asking me, when are we coming back to school? And I'm talking about high school students, so they even want to come back. I'm excited to learn that our superintendents will be involved in Governor Whitmer's reopening committee. And I appreciate all of the work that you are all doing to advocate for GRPS students and staff. Last, I want to recognize the work of the Office of Equity and Inclusion. I definitely don't want to diminish the work of this team and the learning that has taken place so far, but I have to say that a small percentage of our school community has directly benefited from this work. And in closing, Dr. Ross and, Mr. Ross and Dr. Gorman, I will be lobbying for funding from the state and federal level, and I hope that you guys will join me in that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have no other items on the agenda this evening. Thank you all for your time, and I hope that you all are well and staying safe at home. We will follow up with several of the links that we talked about in today's meeting and additional details. So meeting adjourned.